We're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Ms. DeLwes, you have a role.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Castillo?
Here.
Ms. Gil?
Here.
Ms. Litten?
Here.
And Mr. Webb?
Here.
Thank you.
You'll join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I just want to adopt the agenda.
So much.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And if someone would, we're going to go right into session. And if someone will read us in the closing.
Mr. Chair, pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, I move that the board convene a closed meeting for the following purpose: to discuss or consider the identified subject matter; discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including interviews of bidders or offerers, and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A29, in particular, a comprehensive agreement for the design and construction of the new George Mason High School.
A second.
Second.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes. Hi.
Ms. Litten?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And if someone would certify the closed meeting.
Mr. Chair, whereas the Falls Church City Public School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date, it went to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas Section 2.2-377D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Falls Church City Public School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in a closed meeting to which the certification applies; and, two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convened in a closed meeting were heard discussed.
Ms. Gil, a second.
Second.
Ms. Litten. Yeah?
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Castillo?
Sorry.
Ms. Lit-- I'm sorry, Ms. Gil?
Hi.
Ms. Litten?
Aye.
Ms. Russell?
And Mr. Webb?
Aye. We'll move on to business action on the 4411. Dr. Nunnin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, good evening, everybody, and thank you all for being here. Tonight is a very exciting evening for all of us, I think, here in the city of Falls Church as we take the next step in the building of our new George Mason High School. So I'm very excited to have the opportunity to share with the community publicly where we are in our procurement phase, and also speak to the board and speak through to the community as well. So what I was hoping to do this evening is to do a couple of things. The first is hoping to go back into a little bit of history, just to kind of share for the good of the order, sort of the history of the project, then talk a little bit about the reason that we selected the team that we've selected, and then invite the team that has been selected up to share a little bit about their design and their work. So if you'll indulge me for a few minutes, I do want to just spend a little time kind of going back into history, and for some of you, I'm not going to be describing anything you don't remember, but it goes back almost a decade that this conversation, I think, about the new high school has been going on. And it's been a conversation that now has been building and has put us, I think, on the precipice of doing something very special up on the hill, on the western side of Falls Church City. And before we go any further, I do want to take just a second to thank the community for passing the $120 million bond referendum that has put us now in this position that we're in. The community, I believe, is really ready for this project, and we, as a school system, are set to deliver it and deliver on those collective hopes and those collective wishes and those collective dreams that have been so articulately shared with us, or at least with me, over the last year since I've been here, a little more than a year. I also want to thank all of you, school board members, for your engagement throughout this process, the questions that you've asked about the design, following your signing of the confidentiality agreement, by the way, that you had to sign before you could actually look at those. Your review of the contract that was put out in February as part of the RFDP, and always reflecting on the feedback of the community, has been truly helpful to us as a staff, be cognizant and able to formulate our best response to the quote-unquote "problem" of needing a new high school here in the city of Falls Church. So thank you all for your incredible support and work. So after the referendum in November, we put out the RFCP, which is the conceptual phase piece, and that went out on November 30th of 2017, and it was due back on January 17th, 2018. And what essentially that meant was that we were asking for companies to share with us their qualifications and their ability to design and build our new high school, to really gauge their collective readiness. And as a consequence of that RFCP, we received five excellent proposals, and were able to down-select those proposals on February 20th, 2018, to three. And that got us to the three proposals that we're going to move on to the RFDP, or design phase. And before I go any further, I want to thank those members that were part of our down-select of the conceptual phase, that were able-- that were helpful to us to winnow that field from five to three. And there were two school board members that were on that committee. Aaron Gill was on the committee, thank you, Aaron, and Justin Castillo was on the committee. City manager Wyatt Shields was on that committee, thank you, Wyatt. Tricia Minson, our attorney. Russ Wadiska from the Planning Commission was also on that committee, and Dan Zee, council member, thank you very much for your service on that committee as well. So that was the first step in sort of that down-selection from five conceptual ideas to the three design phases that we were moving towards. So on February 22nd, 2018, we launched, on time, on schedule, our RFDP to the three finalists that were out there. And those finalists were given several months to put together a conceptual design that would best meet our collective needs here in the city of Falls Church. And those collective needs here in the city of Falls Church come from a variety of different perspectives and from a variety of different places. And the first is our educational specifications. For those of you that are familiar with school systems, you know that we have a core set of values that came from the community that are adopted by the school board that speak to what are the specifications that every building should have. In other words, how big should a classroom be? Should we have a media center or not have a media center? How large should the auditorium be? How many students should it hold, et cetera? We also held a number of community outreach sessions. The design teams were also able to look back at the 10 years of notes and comments that had been made about the high school. Thank you to Mary Beth Connolly for her extraordinary work pulling together the history that people could look at. And all of that information was pulled into account to develop this design piece that came to us on May 17th. So on May 17th, we received the three finalists' submissions, and on June 11th, shortly thereafter, our team met to discuss the three final design teams, and then down-select those three design teams to finalists that we would do personal interviews with, well, committee interviews with, not personal, but committee interviews with. And I want to just take a second to thank that committee, because it was another group of people that came together that were able to help us move from three to the two finalists that were ultimately interviewed. And those folks were Ross Lichtenhouse on the city council, who is unable to be here tonight, Tim Stevens from Planning Commission was on that committee, Shawna Russell from the school board was on the committee, again, city manager Wyatt Shields was on that committee, thank you, Wyatt. Matt Hills, principal at George Mason High School, was on the committee. Kristin Michael, our chief operating officer. Tricia Minson, our chief legal mind. And Lisa Hyer, chief academic officer, was also on that team. So from there, we were able to, on June 29th, interview the two finalists that were down-selected. And after deliberations and conversation, we came to unanimous agreement, as a committee, that Gilbain, Stantec, and Quinn Evans was the team that we wanted to have build our new high school here in the city of Falls Church. So following that meeting, we sent 15 clarifying questions to that team, who responded well, and we asked those questions because before we engaged in any kind of communication or negotiation, we wanted to make sure that we had just one more bit of information that would help us in that contract negotiation. And today, we bring to the school board a completed contract that we were successfully able to negotiate over the last five days, four days, with Gilbain Corporation. So throughout this confidential procurement, we've done a lot of outreach to the community with respect to process, maybe not details around who's in and who's out, but certainly about process. When are we having the meetings? Who are they going to be with? Who's going to be on the team, et cetera? We've held community meetings that have talked about the design elements that we were looking for. We've held Sunday series meetings. We've had school board meetings, from central office videos, newsletters. We've thanked Nick Benton from the Falls Church News Press for helping us with information. We've used Twitter, our website, and the like to get information out. So we are excited to be here tonight after that sort of history, that was 10 years in a nutshell. So thank you for indulging me in the history. Which leads us to sort of the second phase, which is why Gilbain, Stantec, and Quinn Evans. And again, sort of being a culmination of a 10-year conversation of what we've heard from the community, our Ed specs, and the values that this community holds with respect to education, it was unbelievably clear that there was no other team that would be the team that would work for us. So as we thought about the process that we used and think about why, there are really three areas that I want to concentrate on briefly as I describe this. The first is design, the second is budget, and the third is timeline. And I think if we can keep those three big ideas in our minds as we think about this project, it would be helpful. So first, design. We've spent a lot of time working side-by-side, the city manager Wyatt Shields and I, with respect to not only the high school project, but also the Ten Acre project. And as a consequence of that, I think that we've done a lot of listening, we've had a lot of talking, we've done a lot of talking, and we both agree that both sites need to be compatible, simpatico if you will, that the school site needs to work with the Ten Acre site, and the Ten Acre site needs to work with the school site. And this design that you're going to see tonight, or you may have seen already on the website, really does that, I think, beautifully. What Stantec, Gilbain, and Quinn Evans have put together is a site design that actually moves all of the fields and field complexes to the backside of the building. And they've also relocated, as part of their design, the loading dock for Mary Ellen Henderson to the backside of the building, which in the end provides for us an eastern-facing new high school and new face of the middle school that looks like a contiguous building. It's a much better-looking facade to, I think, the development community, and it actually makes more sense instructionally for us and operationally for us as well. They have also, as part of their plan, developed what they call a good friend zone, which would be an area of green space between the school and the Ten Acre parcel. Their design also incorporates net-zero-ready opportunities for us and lead gold with some comfort, meaning that there is some room for us to continue to move through that gold, lead gold process. As we looked at the design, it also appears that there are more trees in the Gilbain-Stantec design than there were in the others, which was important, I know, to the community, particularly our friends that are part of the Environmental Sustainability Commission. Getting inside of the building, the instructional spaces are incredible. They are built for the future and for 21st-century learning. They're flexible in their design, and they create opportunities for futuristic learning, not knowing right now that we don't know what school is going to look like in 25 years. It's incumbent upon us, if we truly want to have a sustainable building, to have one that's flexible enough for us to be able to move and move around in the next 25 years. And this design gives us that flexibility. There are great spaces for collaboration, for students to come together and critically think and problem-solve and develop projects. And as part of that, when you think about instructional space in a building, no longer can we think about instructional space as being only the classroom. It also includes the hallway. It also includes areas of commons where students are coming together and utilizing that space for instructional purposes as well. There are excellent lines of sight, so supervision can happen from different spaces. It provides us a regionally excellent athletic facility to the extent that we potentially could support and offer regional competitions here at our schools, which I think would be a real benefit to the city economically. The arts facility is 21st century. It's beautiful in the way that it's come together. The building also provides us an opportunity to segment for different purposes. So what I mean by that is community use is going to be of paramount importance to us in our new building. This is not a school building, it's a community building. It's a school first, but then a community building. So it's important for us to figure out ways that we can open it up and allow the community to come in. But when you walk in the door, and I don't want to give too much away, so I'll sort of hold Jennifer and Dirk, but when you come in the door, that first-floor entry has many of the public spaces that people in the community would want to access, whether it's the auditorium, whether it's the gymnasium, or the cafeteria. And instead of going right or left, this building is more vertical, which means that the second floor can be blocked off, and people have access to the first floor, which still gives them access to all of the things that our community would want, and that was important to us. Safety and security was paramount in this design phase as well. When you see the design, it may seem counterintuitive, because there's a lot of glass and a lot of glazing in the building, but the design is meant to support great lines of sight, and again, segmenting the building for safety and security, being able to block off areas just electronically if we needed to in an emergency. So as I thought about this design, one of the things that came to mind was I had an opportunity to tour the Google campus a couple of years ago out in California, and it feels more like visiting a Google campus than it does going back to my 20-year high school reunion. The spaces are incredible, they're well-lit, there's great daylighting throughout the building, there's lots of space for collaboration, and the classrooms feel like classrooms should feel, where students can move for different purposes and are flexible. So to maybe use a different analogy, instead of Google, to keep it more at home, it feels like you're going into Viggot. If you've ever been to Viggot, you know that it's kind of open at Viggot. So it takes us to the second piece, which is budget. I think our community is well-aware that they committed to $120 million all-in bond when they passed it in November, which means that includes our bond costs, our architecture, our engineering, our site and construction, and our post-construction costs. And both of the two finalists that were interviewed came in with the same dollar figure. So I want to make sure that everybody understands that. And that dollar figure that both the teams came in with is a construction cost limit of $108 million. That means that the construction cost limit is going to be that much, and the additional amount beyond that goes to architecture, engineering, bond costs, and the like. So when I think about what the differentiators were, there wasn't a big differentiator between the two finalists when it came to budget, but there certainly was in the design. And the last differentiator from the Gilbain team for us was schedule. So budget, design, budget, and schedule. And schedule for us in this design build was important. And what has been shared with us as a consequence of this down-select is that the design-build company that we're selecting has proposed an accelerated timeframe, which means that in the current plan, we could potentially take control of the building in the December 2020, January 2021 timeline. This could facilitate an early move for our students to come in. We did get a little questioning today, asking if students, does that mean that seniors in 2021, or 2020, would be able to move in early, or 2021 would be able to move in before they left for their senior year? And the answer to that is maybe. We are ultimately hopeful. But what it also means is that our students who play indoor athletics, for example, in the winter, potentially could play their indoor athletic sports in that first winter. So when we think about the real distinguishing items between the Gilbain-Stantec-QuinnEvans team and the other finalist, who, by the way, did an outstanding job, and I want to say publicly that the other team, it was really, it came down to two really great designs and really great companies, but there were some distinguishing factors that really set Gilbain and Stantec apart, and they really were around design and around schedule. And the other part of it, too, quite honestly, and I know a couple of people here are from the team, the team also was important to us. Being able to, as a committee, meet with that team and see how they interact with each other, how they've worked with us already, just in terms of the contract arrangements and the like, has been outstanding. So with that, I share with you sort of the reasons and rationale why we've come to the decision that we've come to, and I say "we," really is that down-select committee that I mentioned earlier. And at this time, I'd like to invite Gilbain and Stantec representatives up to introduce yourself, and we have a little information that you'd like to share. So Jennifer and Dirk, if you want to come up and introduce yourself, that would be great. Do you want to sit? Would that be okay?
There.
All right. And you're going to have to speak aloud, because we don't have mic.
I'm Jennifer Max, I'm with Gilbain. I'm the design-build project manager and principal in charge, leading the pursuit, and I'll also be involved with the project throughout the design and construction phase.
Good evening, I'm Dirk Jeffrey, principal of Stantec Architecture.
Welcome.
Thank you. We're very excited about this opportunity. You've walked through 10-year timeline of all the things that you've been discussing, and throughout the process, we just tried to absorb everything that we were hearing, everything we were reading, participated in some of your community meetings, because we really wanted to understand what was important to you. So I'm glad to hear that all that research that we did as we were putting together a proposal really came through. So what we're going to do is walk you through, these are videos that we included and went through as a part of our interview process. And these, as a part of the design phase, we did draw all our stuff in Revit models, so if you're familiar with technology that we're currently using in design. And so a lot of the output, you'll see, we're pretty far down the road in terms of the design phase, so we were able to create visualizations from the models that we've already created for the process. So we're first going to walk through the timeline, which to give you a feel kind of the overall campus and how we approached some of the site things that Dr. Noonan has already reviewed. Except if you want to, like, Maestro Q-ing. So this is just to give you a feel for what the existing condition of the campus looks like today. So right now, we've got the softball field, the tennis courts, and you'll see as a part of the design, when the new high school gets built, we are leaving the football and the baseball fields intact in their same footprint. So let's let that spin around for a second, just to orient you. So the first summer, we're scheduled to start construction in June of 2019, or after school's out. I'm going to pause there for one second. That first summer's really critical for us, because what we want to do when students are away from campus and there's not the congestion on campus, is really focus on the excavation, getting, we have basically a sub-basement, two-level sub-basement, and so our focus that first summer is basically getting all the dirt offsite. So we're able to, if you want to do it again, this allows us to, all that heavy truck traffic, we really focused on the summers doing those types of activities that are best handled when school is not in session. So once that footprint of the sub-basement is created, then we'll be turning our attention, you'll see the timeline on slide. At this point, we're basically returning schools back in, and we're creating the foundations, and then the structure's coming up. You want to pause one more second. An important thing to note here is we are building directly adjacent to the middle school, so it's important for us during construction, there'll be a lot of provisions made to make sure that we're providing safe pathways for egress out of the middle school, and we'll also be working very closely with both the principals from both schools as it relates to noise mitigation and making sure that we're not having any impact on any of the instructional learning during the school year. But then, once the steel is up, we're basically near the end of the year, turning around the first of the year, so at this point, we're in 2020. So the goal is basically by the summer of 2020 that the building is enclosed. So you'll see, it's kind of a, for how the time lapse works within the video, we're just going to spin around, so you'll see that the skin is magically going up on the building in the video. So if you want to pause here, one of the other important things to note is because of the school, where it's being located, we are providing access to the football field and the baseball field during, throughout the construction. So that purple line that you see on the video is basically showing a temporary pathway that we'll be creating, so that people will still be able to park in the parking lots and then safely go around the construction to access those two fields. So the enclosure of the building, you know, substantially complete with the enclosure over the summer months. And then another critical, so now at this point, we're in the summer of 2020, and so if you want to pause here, you'll see that the fence line is being pulled back. At this point, we're creating a significant portion of the new site work, a new bus turnaround, and basically redoing all the parking that right now is adjacent to the middle school. And we're also creating that new loading dock that Dr. Noonan had mentioned, so you'll see up behind the fence line, creating a new loading dock, and we also are creating a new shared kitchen. So what we've proposed is that the high school and the middle school will now have a shared food preparation, and then have separate serving lines at feedage school. This is also allowing us to create a really nice connection between the high school and the middle school for those students that do travel back and forth, between really creating more of a campus feel than two separate schools. This is then, so through the summer, again, getting all that roadwork done while we don't have a lot of cars parked on campus. And then through the fall, we're really focusing on finishing the inside of the building, so all the interiors, system testing, mechanical, electrical systems, and then really gearing up for in that winter months, if you pause here, magically the fence goes away. So this is where we've proposed that the school can be done and ready for an early move-in over the winter break. What that would mean is over the fall, we'll basically be completing all the work in front of the high school, the new high school, but because that, you'll see that the portion of the new site work is under the footprint of the existing high school, so that would be a little bit of a temporary condition, just until we're able to complete the demolition of the high school. So at this point, we kind of sit for a couple months. You know, there's a transition, assuming that the transition does happen, students would come back for campus at this point, and then if you pause, basically starting in March is when we would start looking at doing the demolition of the existing high school. It's about four-month timeframe to take down the existing school, because we have both the abatement of hazardous materials, as well as the removal of the school, the foundations. There's quite a bit of underground work that needs to come out as well when we do the demolition. At that same point, you know, the school itself is already done, and now in the spring months, we'll be completing all the remaining fields. So you'll see the new softball field, the new tennis courts, and the new multi-use field being placed in that complex. So by the end of that summer, when students come back in fall, all of the fields will be completed and ready for play. Then what happens in the last summer, you'll see that the fence and the demolition of the existing high school happens, and then if you pause here, you'll see the start of the new plaza that'll get created, and Dirk will talk more about that when he shows the architectural renderings. But you can see why it's so important that the existing high school needs to be removed first in order for us to be able to complete all that parking work. And so again, this is all focused on doing this work over the summer, avoiding any disruptions while the students are on campus, and it just would be impossible to try to make that work over a school-year setting. So we've timed all that work, so that we can get all that work done there. And then at that point, we're also doing the renovations to the middle school. So in order for us to, at this point, we've really just kind of like pissed up against the middle school, we haven't actually created the physical connection. So that last summer is when we'll actually break through, we have a little bit of renovation to do in the middle school, we'll move over the existing food service equipment, there is some equipment that gets relocated over. And so that way, when students come back in the fall, the middle school is also renovated and ready. And then this shows you what the final condition looks like, so you've got the bus parking, maintaining the parking that was called for, and then you've got all the new athletic fields in play. What becomes really nice about this athletic zone is basically a fenced-in athletic corridor. So in the event of ticketed events, there's a nice way to create, we called it Mustang Way, there's a nice kind of promenade that cuts through the field area that really provides a sense of athletic community when events are going on. I think we were slower than that in the interview, weren't we? I don't know, we were running out of time. So this gives you a kind of, we did a lot looking at, you know, vantage points of what it looks like during the day versus what the facility looks like at night. So with that, we'll transition to the, more the design, you'll get to see the inside of the building as well.
Dr. Noonan, are you sure you don't want to do this? I learned a lot from your words there.
The only thing I've learned from you is what the tunnels are actually called. I'll leave that to you to tell the rest of the committee. So compelled.
And Wunorf. That was like the...
Oh, Wunorf.
Wunorf was the word of the, that plaza in the front was the...
I learned that word as well.
We didn't know that word. It's apparently a term that's used for a lot of plaza settings in Europe, where they create that nice pedestrian way, but also very friendly to vehicles when it needs to be. So we had to practice that word a lot.
This, we can just pause right here for a second. This just looks at the building from the fifth-floor apartment of the future mixed-use development. Looking to the building, you'll see the plaza there in front of the new, of the new high school. That plaza extends into that good neighbor space, which is 300 spaces of parking required by the school, also could be shared by development. We're hoping that at one point, perhaps there's an opportunity, if that could ever be structured for parking, and then you can imagine a green space, a true community-use green space in that area where there is currently proposed parking. You can also see, by leaning the road away from the school, how much yard and frontage you actually create. And so you can see right where the blue stair area is, that is the current loading dock. So by taking the loading dock out and restoring that to yard, you also then create a little bit more space between the traffic and the building. And all of that then can be very nice queuing space for buses and so forth in the afternoons. So a lot of attention given to just the arrival and the experience of coming and going every day by students and staff and visitors, and, and the face that it presents to the, to the community in the future. You can see also, just from a massing standpoint, the middle school is a three-story structure. And then the building is simply two academic bars, very simple diagram. One is four stories and the other is five stories. And you can also see in this view, all of the PV panels that would go toward making up that 25% power generation toward the net zero. The existing roof is kept clean, I'm sorry, the new roof is kept clean to allow for all of those PVs. So we can go forward. Thank you. So again, you can see the Wunorf crossing over, the bollards keep the pedestrians and the cars apart. Going through the main entrance, this is the main arrival for everyone, every day. On the left is the main office. All of this is ballistic glass. We'll pause and we'll say hello to the security, go ahead, to the security officer. Someone's getting busted. And then, and then we'll go, and then this is the heart of the school. We pay a lot of attention to the design principles that were put forth in the study, which was, I want to just acknowledge the good work by Perkins Eastman as well, very nicely done. But we know the strength of the Performing Arts Program in Falls Church. So if you could just pause here, John, the, what you're seeing here modeled is the mezzanine. The mezzanine is an alternate to provide the additional 100 seats. So we're showing the mezzanine in this model, and then if you would go forward, then, and then what we had done with some high schools recently is, the back half of the auditorium can be treated as a flat floor with retractable auditorium-style seating, upholstered seats and backs that retract, so that you can use it as a flat floor, flexible space, and you can close a partition, so that the forward half can be used for large group instruction, the back half can be used for some other, some other use simultaneously. So that's what's in our proposal, is using the auditorium in this way. Going back into the lobby, we know that there's a great deal of history and culture and legacy around athletics and academics. There's your Mustang medallion from the library. We'll come back to the legacy wall on the left in just a moment. Working our way down, the main crossroads here at the main level, the elevator bank is right here on the right, and then just turning and looking back toward the middle school, the Mustang Cafe. And that is a grab-and-go scramble type of a food operation, backing up to a common food kitchen that then would also share separately a middle school serving line. So a high school and middle school serving line served by a common kitchen. And then we'll be renovating the middle school, we'll be moving the serving line to the vocal music room, and then we'll be renovating the serving line for vocal music when we're done, to make that all work. So very open, and then go, if you would, please. And then we're looking at this point, down one level into the competition gymnasium. You can see the stairs down on your left, so we'll look all the way through, you saw the elevation in, in the video that Jen just showed, but we're looking all the way through the gymnasium north out onto the existing football field. And a couple of those banners, I think, are for boys' and girls' soccer and boys' tennis this spring. If we just continue down the way. The next space is the auxiliary gym with the elevated running track, again, accessible off of this heart of the school. We'll just take a moment, take a look at that. Again, you can see right through all of this. Sure. You can see the branded graphics in this area of the building, Mustang graphics. We're looking up to the maker space that is on the second floor there. So bringing back to the beginning, going back up now the stairs on the left, graphics, anything that would acknowledge the history of academics, the athletics, the culture, the history here in Falls Church. Arriving here on the second floor, again, rethinking the media center as a more contemporary kind of a space, it's right over the cafeteria, so the glass there at the end could connect right down. This may be a place that you might allow students to bring their lunch, for example. Very accessible to the community. And at the end of this axis, then, again, still in the heart of the school, at the end of this axis then, is one of the two maker studios. So overhead cord reels, movable furniture, 3D printers, robot drones, and still connected to the other activities of the school, athletics. Looking back over that main, second floor, main floor, heart of the school, and then on out to the athletic complex to the west. Moving on to the third floor, this is, this is the third floor, again, in the heart of the school, right on that main corridor. This is a feature we call the learning stair. It is, it provides convenient access up to the fourth floor, but it also provides large group instruction and meeting space in the form of an amphitheater. Looking back out over to outdoor learning space that connects to your steam labs on the third floor, again, a collaborative learning space right in the middle of your building, looking back out to the front now of the school. So if you can imagine out those windows would be the future community, commercial development. This is on the fourth floor in that academic bar. All of the classrooms, great deal of visibility into the space, half-high lockers below the windowsill overlooking, and again, that's the third floor, double-height space, so that you can imagine all of the various types of learning that you could, you could have here and offer your students in a space like this. You saw a moment ago a skylight on that fourth floor ceiling, and I'll show you that in just a moment. Again, typical classroom, I think we had a SpaceX launch going off on this day. You had lots of transparency going out. Now we're on the fifth, we're on the fifth floor, the highest floor of that northernmost bar. And a portion of this floor is depressed as an outdoor learning terrace. Race track of classrooms that are around that central space, but you can imagine allowing students actually outside into that terrace, completely secure for any number of things in a space like this. There's that skylight bringing light into that third and fourth floor double-height space there right on the right. Again, this is part of the fifth floor, and then if we just raise up and look back, the roof, again, all of the PV array to get to the 25% generation, you see the overall massing of the building. It feels very compatible with the middle school. As the sun sets over our shoulder, the crowd goes wild.
So at this point, we, first of all, thank you. A great walkthrough or fly-through of the building. And Mr. Chair, I wondered if the school board might have some questions.
Thank you all very much. This is an exciting moment of just sitting here and amazed by the possibilities in just a few years from now of what you all put out in front of us, so I'm pretty excited about where we are and want to look forward to have you all as a partner, too. So with that, I will open the floor to, any questions from my panel?
I just had a quick question about, I think, something I read about in the plan that I didn't see on there. Is there some sort of outside eating dining space?
There is, yes.
Kind of around the back. It just didn't show.
It's just outside the dining room, there is a terrace that overlooks the softball field.
Okay, that students could walk.
Correct.
Outside.
The questions. Mr. Casilla?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Great, great presentation and a great design. Dr. Noonan explained that security and access control is done vertically. So could you explain, how does that work? Do you just lock the academic side doors in some form or fashion? I didn't, I didn't see any big gates that roll down, you know, like in New York City at night. So could you explain a little bit about how that segregation works?
So vertically, I mean, elevators are certainly controllable. Fairwells are certainly controllable, right? So you have that. But once, once you're at each of those levels, it's also treated in much the way of an office building has a core. So in that core, the toilets and the stairs and the elevators. But access to those academic wings, north or south, are completely closed off. Within each of those academic wings, each of the east and west halves of the pot are also, are also locked off. So that's sort of horizontally. So vertically, you can go up and only get to the middle, if you wish, people to go up or down, only getting to the middle. The main level serves the auditorium and then the gymnasium. When you go to the top of the stairs to the media center, there will be doors, so you won't be able to get into the media center unless, so it's not, it's not a, I don't need to go up there. And so if I did go up, I wouldn't be able to get in. If you want to open the doors, then you can certainly allow people to have the media center. So it's, there's, there's barriers, there's just, there's layers horizontally, and there's layers vertically. That's just, that's just a strategy that's pretty common today. So if someone were to breach one barrier, say the vestibule, he can only go so far in the building before, he just can't go any further. So through stairs, which have doors that lock and shut automatically, that's, that's, that would be your strategy.
And then just, just one other question. The solar panels on the roof, are those things that can be added, or are those actually in scope?
Yeah, so we'll design for, so the scope was to provide for net-zero ready. So we've incorporated in our design everything we could to make the school as energy-efficient as it could possibly be before we need to create, actually generate, energy. And we offer two different options for pursuing the PV. So one option is to buy the PV panels as a part of the project scope. It was one of the alternates asked for 25%. We also priced doing 100%. And then we also suggested the opportunity that Falls Church engage in a PPA directly with a solar panel provider who would provide the panels and the infrastructure at no cost to the district in exchange for the utility rates would get paid directly to that entity. So we have a couple of different options that we'll be able to explore during design.
And just to add on to that, there are a couple of jurisdictions, one very close to us, that is working through a PPA, a power purchase agreement right now, that we're hopeful is successful for them, because if it is, and we decide to go that way, potentially we could ride that contract and the like. But I want to thank Tim Stevens again publicly for his incredible work in sort of keeping our minds on this, and he's been very helpful in sort of keeping us abreast of what's happening with respect to renewable energy.
Mr. Anderson?
So during the presentation on the, the construction process, you were talking about a lot of the heavy construction happening during the summer, is in order to minimize the impacts. What about the, during this school year, are you going to work to minimize the impacts of the things that have to be done then?
Yeah. So what we've done is we've designated the back entrance. If you were, I don't know if you could see from the video, there was essentially in that first summer, two construction entrances, one that was basically at the footprint of where the existing, where the, where that front entrance was for the new high school. That will only get used that first summer. At that point, it really doesn't make sense to use that, because that's really in the main pathway of your school traffic. So what we've done off that bus loop is we've provided basically a back way to get into the construction site, so kind of transversing over where all the footprint of the new field will go. And then what our plan is from a logistics standpoint is we will not have any delivery scheduled during arrival times or dismissal times. And so we're used to working on existing campuses where we work closely with our deliveries to make sure that those only happen after school is already in session, to avoid conflicts with our truck.
Okay, and what about sort of when they're doing the work of actually, frames are going up, they're doing the work inside the frames to do the construction during school times?
Yeah, so we have a fence that goes all the way around our construction site, so we'll be completely segregated from actual people being able to access the construction site. And then really, the concern at that point is managing the noise, especially when we're working next to the existing building. So in some of those cases, it may be when we need to do a physical structural tie-in, we won't do it until school's out. So that would be an afternoon activity we would schedule. There are just unfortunately some activities that are noisier than others. We're very aware of the testing schedule. One of the things we were really concerned about, so in the RFP, we were told to take mind of the testing schedule, but really the challenge is, we're not only working with the high school testing schedule, we're also working with the middle school and with the IB and the placement tests and with SOLs, and it's a lot, I mean, it's almost eight weeks of testing. And so we're going to need to work very closely with both principals to understand exactly which days or which tests and what times they're going on, and then do some shuffling to make sure that we're not impacting those activities. So the only other real main impact is the middle school. If you saw, our high school basically like tucks in on the one end, and so that one will need to work with the fire marshal to figure out what happens with those exits during construction, because they'd be emptying into the construction site. But on the other sides of the building, what we're going to do is create a fence that sits off of the face of the middle school, so there'll be a safe egress path that will be automatically marked, so that if there's any issues that students need to get out of the school, that they'll be able to do so.
Okay, and then the only other thing in the same sort of trend is other things like dust and other environmental conditions, just sort of minimizing the impacts there.
Absolutely. Yeah, so, you know, we're required to comply with the Virginia requirements for construction, where we put in very rigorous controls at each of our construction entrances to make sure that we're not tripping any dirt outside of our construction site. We also maintain a really strong dust control program, so in the summer months, when there's the potential for dust, we'll do a watering program on site to make sure that we're maintaining dust. Our superintendents will do regular inspections on site to make sure that not only that our site is kept clean, but all the area outside of our construction site is clean as well. So, yeah, I mean, the, the goal is to avoid any dust or mud leaving our site and make sure that our noise is contained and not impacting the daily school schedule.
Thanks.
I have another question, kind of design-related, and again, it was in the written proposal, and it was about the bus lane. I believe it showed it, I mean, kind of where the bus is currently towards MEH. I didn't know that we still would have, I guess, thinking that would be part of the acre. Is, are we still going to be able to have that?
We'll still have the front, the front portion of the building to be able to maneuver, and then we still have open on the, maybe the north side of the campus, that'll still be open. And then we'll re-grid for different purposes, so I'm not, I'm not sure I know exactly.
The corridor that goes along UVA.
Oh, yeah, that is going to be open.
That will, we will still have that.
Yeah, that stays the same.
Yeah, sorry, that was the...
It's possible that with the development, that's reconstructed and redesigned to, for the school purpose, for the road, as it currently is.
Okay. Thank you.
Bill?
So I love all the natural light. Actually, I used to work at Bloomberg, it was all open like that, I think it's a great concept. My only question is about climate control. So is... So especially like in the gym, like how, how does it work with the sun beating in there? Is it going to make it very hot or are these special glasses going to control that?
Well, the sun, I mean, the gymnasium actually is mostly north-facing, so it's actually, you won't get solar gain in the, in the gymnasium at all.
So from the building standpoint, the glass has coatings on the glass to help minimize the, any heat gain within the building. And the way that the HVAC systems are designed, they're regionalized, so they're zoned. So there's a separate unit that's dedicated to the gymnasium, a separate one that's dedicated to each of the different academic spaces. So providing that localized control, you're better able to control those environments.
Is that any question?
Thanks.
So mine is more of a comment and a question. And so I was on the down select committee for the design phase. And I just have to say that spending numerous hours with your proposal was delightful. I mean, I think it's really exciting and very energetic. And I think that, you know, the community from what has been released today is really excited about it as well. And I think that one of the things that has been echoed and people really appreciate is that you seem to realize that what we're looking for is a true community school and that while it's an academic, you know, building that we're looking for and obviously children will be there, but it's really something that's going to be the core of our community. And I think that you really, your design, so...
Thank you. Other questions?
Mine is more in comments as well. I definitely want to say, looking at the kind of motions graphics that you had there, kind of gets me excited about seeing what this very modernized school from what we currently have, and you're taking into consideration the longevity of it so that there can be that adjusting as our school grows, that forethought of adjustment can be put into that as well. Very happy about the creativeness of the, putting all the fields on the backside of the building. There've definitely been some comments in the community about that and kind of seeing that design and being creative of being able to do that. Makes me like the project and your designs even more. The security pieces that you've put into place, I'm happy to see that as well because that's always a concern that we, you know, have to take into consideration of having the ballistic glass and the kind of separation of going through campus, the security piece first before actually going into the building, I think is a feature. And I know more and more schools are going that route now, being able to do that. But with that, I just pretty excited about working with you all, I think, and as we move forward in the project and our community gets more opportunities to see this project and add their, their voice to it as well. I think we're well on the ways for a partnership and I'm pretty excited about it. Particularly of those folks who, want to thank also those folks who were on the down select committee of their hard work and kind of getting into the weeds of what this project is going to be and, and helping us bring us to this point as well. Well on our way for our project and even more so excited that you all are talking about bringing it on even sooner than we thought. So that's, that's always a good something to have, of being able to potentially, and I always, potentially have our, some of the students who are going to live through some of the construction may actually get to use some of the, if only the fields, but potentially even in the building itself before they graduate. But thank you all very much for your rest of time and, and the work that you've done so far.
So I want to also thank our friends from the city council that are here tonight and Mayor Tarter, thank you for coming out this evening. Hopefully, as, as you've all noticed, we really did try to take into consideration all of the feedback that we've received from a variety of different constituencies and groups throughout the process. That being said, I do want to just remind the community that this is the, this is the base conceptual design of what we're looking at. And there still will be multiple points of engagement and multiple points for feedback as we move through the next several months and as Stantec and Gilbane prove their, prove their design essentially. And we look forward to those engagement points. And some of those went out today and we'll talk through with you when those dates are and figure out ways to do that. But I would encourage everyone in the community, if they are interested, to be part of that. Before we move to the next phase, which is to ask you to approve their contract, I would like Trish Minson just to say a couple of things about the contract at a pretty high level. First and foremost, the contract has been out since February for people to review as part of the RFDP. That was when the draft contract was sent and put out for public preview. Since then, there's been some tweaking, like we knew there would be, but it's fairly minimal and doesn't substantively change the nature of the contract. But I'll, I'll let Ms. Minson sort of talk about the contract.
Sure, thank you. As you all know, we followed the PPEA process throughout this contracting with the RFP conceptual and RFP detailed. The contract was issued on February, or the draft contract was put out on February 22nd with the RFPD. We asked the three down-selected groups to give us feedback on the contract and share with us as part of their submissions what parts of the contract they had questions or concerns with. So before we even went into negotiations, we knew what, if any, issues there might be with the three down-selected entities. And we took that into consideration to see what the cost of those changes in the contract would be. For any of you who enjoy reading contracts as I do, you'll notice that the majority of the changes in the contract from the draft that went out in February to what is proposed before the board tonight had to do with Gilbane's program. Their accelerated schedule for the new school development did result in some changing of provisions and adding provisions that talked about the, the connection between the high school and the middle school. Also, the liquidated damages that were included in there were amended a bit to show that there wouldn't be any penalties on Gilbane if they didn't meet their accelerated schedule. But also, there would be no additional costs for the school division if this accelerated schedule wasn't met. So it was a give and take there that I think we all walked away feeling very good about. Either we're going to get the school early and get in early, or we won't, but we'll still meet our June 2021 timeframe and it won't be an additional cost, even though it might take longer to get there. So those were the, the main parts of the contract that changed between February 22nd and what's before you today. We also, I really appreciate the input of the city attorney, Ms. McCosker. We worked through with her mainly provision 12.4, the termination by owner for convenience, making sure that we had strong language available that in the event we need to terminate the agreement for, for no fault due to the design builder, we can walk away. So that, that provision allows us to make sure that the city's moving forward on their project. And if they're not, there is a clause that, that allows us to make sure that we pay what is owed and pay for the great work that's been done, but then don't owe any other money on there. So that was, was, that provision came about through collaboration with the city. Grateful for the city's input on that and also hopeful that's not something that we'll have to use because we are really excited about the proposal and, and really confident with what has been proposed to date and look forward to the relationship going forward.
Any questions?
I, I had a question for Dr. Noonan, so I can save that until any, I was just, we've received some questions and, and since we're all here, it might be good, could you just set out at a high level, what's, what in these doc, in these pictures that we've seen is fixed and what's still, what are we going to be doing for the next year or so?
Yeah, no, it's a good question. So let me sort of talk about it in the next three to four months. This is really a moment in time that I think as a community, we need to come together and sort of rally and take a look at what's out there. We're going to have, again, a number of points of contact to be able to see and, and review these designs. What, the way that we've sort of put together, conceptually, how we can look at it as a community is to utilize a couple of different points. One is we have the Sunday series already that exists. So using those Sunday series, there's a P, another PTA meeting later in the fall that we can use and, my, it's Siri. So Sunday series. And, and there you go. Sorry. Anyway, so there are a couple of, of points in time that are already existing that we're going to use. And when we come, our hope is that Gilbane and Stantec and Quinn Evans can be there, share their design, and then we'll break into smaller groups. And those groups will have defined sort of areas of interest. So if you're interested in athletics, come here. If you're interested in arts, come here. If you're interested in parking and transportation and walkability, come here. If you're interested in environmental sustainability, come here. And then we'll provide feedback around each of those areas through a structure. And that structure still remains to be defined, but it will likely have folks from Gilbane and Stantec and also from the schools and, you know, Mr. Hills has led a couple of sessions before too. We'll take that feedback, provide it to them, and we'll, and it becomes an iterative, to some degree, process. The one thing I don't want to, I, I just want to be cautious of, not that I don't want to do, I just want us to be cautious of the fact that we've done a lot of lead-up work to this, a decade of lead-up work to this. We've held meetings like that before where we've asked people to come in and give feedback to proof the ed spec, to proof some of the design thoughts and ideas that were part of this, the conceptual phase. What do you like, what don't you like? And I, I think what we've got here is a, a pretty strong start. So I don't want us to leave here thinking that we're going to reinvent the wheel, but instead do some fine tuning and some tweaking to really create that space that we believe is ours. And so that'll go on until October timeframe. And then Dirk and his team will continue, Mr. Jeffries and his team will continue to draw and refine and, and do those things because the sooner the architects can get drawing, the better it is for all of us. So that when we get to that 65%, and I'll, I'll mention this again, when we get to roughly 65% of the drawings, then we'll engage in that GMP. And that GMP is going to be something that I'll bring back to you for your approval again, to make sure that you see what the guaranteed maximum price is and what we're buying. But the, the more time we have between now and when we get to GMP, the better.
Any additional questions? With that, is there no additional questions?
I have a comment. Can I make a comment?
You most certainly.
I, I just have like my ending statement here that I've written. It's like I want to get to it. No, I, I just want to, I just want to thank again publicly the team for their incredible work and the board for your incredible work behind the scenes. And as your superintendent of schools, I'm tasked to work on the capital and the operational aspects of the school system and make the best decisions that we as a team can make on behalf of Falls Church City Public Schools. And consequently, our team has worked diligently on this project. And to date, to bring you the best of what is out there, consulting you all along the way and appreciate your feedback. The contract and design reflects the feedback of you as board members, from you as board members, along with the community have shared thought throughout the past several months and dare I say decades to move this project ahead. And again, as I was saying earlier, the one thing I do want to remind everybody of is that we are going to do an addendum to the contract, which is the, the GMP or the greatest maximum price. And that will come back to you. And that will be another gut check for this board and a gut, gut check for us to say, is this really what we want? Because here we go. And that will be an important moment for us all. So, but tonight, I think what we're asking for and maybe more pointedly, I am asking for is your, your vote and opportunity to engage in a contract with Gilbane to get our 21st century high school project off the ground. So thank you very much for your support and for the community support and Stantec, Gilbane, and our team for their amazing work pulling this together.
Dr. Noonan. And I again want to thank everyone and assuming to be a new partner and very exciting project that we're about to undertake as a community here. And with that, I will make a motion.
So I move that the school board authorize the superintendent to sign the comprehensive agreement between the Falls Church City Public Schools and Gilbane Building Company for the design and construction of the new George Mason High School.
Ms. Russell, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Gil. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those, thank you all very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. So can we take a five-minute recess?
We most certainly can. Actually, work session portion of the night and turn that over to Dr. Noonan and talk about the triennial plan update for operations.
Yes, good evening again, and thank you very much for that very exciting moment in the history of the city of Falls Church. Proud to be here to be a part of that. Now, we would like to move into equally exciting opportunity to hear from Richard Cade from Food Services and Nancy Hendrickson from Transportation. But before we do that, and I'm going to turn it over to Kristin first in just a second to, to talk briefly about what you will see and hear. You may recall, when we first came out with the triennial plan, we did add the portion around operations and trying to find effectiveness and efficiency within our operational, our operational offices and departments. And we asked for volunteers earlier this year of who would like to take on the first round of being sort of the canaries in the mine, if you will, to really look at not only how does, how does your organization work, but how does it work in comparison to other nationally normed organizations that are like yours so you can begin to benchmark. And Richard and Nancy stepped up and we're very thankful to them because they are going to be leading out of the gate for the other operational departments as well. So tonight, they're going to share with you some information and I'll turn it over to Kristin to fill you in further.
So thank you so much this evening to give the first of our presentations in terms of our operational efficiency and effectiveness. This is really a process and Nancy and Richard have really done a lot of work to kick off this process and really start the development of not only how do we measure our operational efficiency, but then how do we develop goals in terms of improving that? Because part of our triennial plan goal by 2020 was to have our operational systems in, aligned to supporting our triennial plan with 100% fidelity to show growth over baseline and system efficiency and effectiveness. So we're really working as time goes on to not only continue to determine what to measure and benchmark it with other organizations, then how to improve that efficiency and how to report back to the board what that efficiency is. So tonight, I'm really pleased to have Nancy and Richard present to you both Transportation and Food Service in that order. This really is an iterative process. We've worked with the support team as a whole in terms of looking at what the outlines for this material should be and really working to develop how do we measure our effectiveness. So I'm going to turn it over to Nancy first, who's going to present Transportation.
Hey, good evening. Let me start by just saying that I'm so excited to see the plans for George Mason High School. I've just completed my 25th year and I've had the privilege of watching either the building or renovation of all the other buildings. And this is well overdue and so it's very exciting to take them this first step. All right, so Transportation. Transportation Department provides bus transportation for all Falls Church City students free K through 12th grade who reside in the city of Falls Church, except those who live in areas designated as a walking zone. The superintendent is authorized to establish walking zones where students will be expected to walk to school. Currently, there are 37 contracted and time-carded employees consisting of bus drivers, car drivers, aides to successfully run 91 routes traveling over 700 miles per day. This includes our Arlington Career Center, lake buses, and four special education outplace programs. In addition to home-to-school transportation, buses are provided for field trips. Last school year, the department completed 877 field trips traveling over 35,000 miles. The school board owns 24 full-size school buses, three are equipped with a wheelchair lift, and 17 vehicles to include cars, vans, and maintenance trucks. Each vehicle that carries students is equipped with interior cameras and with a multi repeater, digital radio communication systems with base stations loaded in all of our main offices of each of our Falls Church City schools. The Department of Education requires mandatory safety training to be provided annually for all staff. There are several certified trainers on staff to assist with annual training as well as the 48-hour required classroom and behind-the-wheel training program. Our training program meets and exceeds those requirements with the average training taking upwards of over 60 hours and four to five weeks to complete. So it's quite a, quite a process. Being a small school system, we do not have a training department. We have certified trainers who are bus drivers who provide training midday between their bus runs or on the job during their routes. Drivers are required to complete annual physicals, subject to random and post-accident drug testing, and maintain all local, state, and federal requirements. Here are some of the acronyms and definitions through the report. American Traffic Solutions is ATS. It's our Stop Arm Camera System. DOE, Department of Education. We use Predictable Ride as our GPS real-time location information. IEP, which I think everybody here is familiar with. And PAR is our Personnel Action Report. And it's a term for contracted staff members. And then time card... And then Time Card is temporary employees who are not eligible for benefits. Staffing. The Transportation Department consists of one director, one lead driver, 17 bus drivers and for regular bus runs, four special education car drivers, and 10 car and bus aides. Mostly composed of part-time employees working a split shift. We have shared employees with Food Service who fill their time working midday, and due to our small size and competitive school system, with our competitive school systems in the region, one of our greatest challenges is to attract and retain qualified substitute staff to assist when drivers are out sick or athletics needs to leave before regular bus runs are completed in the afternoon. Many times myself or the lead driver, Justin, are required to serve a substitute, which leaves no one in the office to effectively supervise road operations, answer the phones, or respond for breakdowns or accidents. This can leave a negative impression to parents and citizens when they are not able to reach someone or receive a response in a timely manner to their concern. The projected staffing chart here mirrors last year's routes without changes in walk zones or bus or bell schedules. Staffing needs are not expected to change unless enrollment is sufficiently. We'll talk about our transportation fleet. Fleet management activities include procuring buses and other vehicles, coordinating maintenance, planning, and financial oversight. The replacement cycle for school buses is 12 years with the current average age of five years at this time. Vehicles are scheduled for 10 years, and the current age is eight years. This includes cars, vans, and maintenance vehicles. The next chart outlines each bus and the maintenance cost per fiscal year. Preventive maintenance and repair work is performed by our city property yard located across from George Mason High School. Larger repair work that cannot be performed by our city shop gets outsourced to bus maintenance dealers located in Manassas. Transportation routing. Transportation uses TransFinder routing and field trip management software. TransFinder manages and assists in the development of efficient bus routes by geocoding and assigning students to a bus. Information is updated through Power School, which maintains current student lists and other vital student information. This chart reflects the number of students eligible to ride a school bus, how many actually do ride, and how many students are currently living in a designated walk zone. Current walking zones include one mile for George Mason students. TJ has a walking zone based on safe routes to school boundaries, which can also be up to half a mile. And currently, there's no walking zone for students at MEH, Mount Daniel, or Jesse Thacker. Innovations. Much like what's taking place in our classrooms across the country, technology has revolutionized the way that school transportation departments function. Over the past several years, we have implemented new technologies to aid us in the mission of transporting kids safely. Using school bus stop-arm cameras since October 2013 generates revenue into our school system, as well as been a very effective safety tool for educating the public on the importance of stopping for school buses when loading or unloading children. Predictable Ride GPS tracking system allows for real-time location, tracking of all equipped vehicles, provides the school system with reports to feed, monitors routes, and helps to reduce operational costs. Participating parents pay a monthly subscription fee to receive text alerts with estimated arrival times of their bus. The GPS feature on vehicles has become an integral part of our operations, and if this free service was no longer viable, then we would need to probably find funding to, for that service. Some areas of opportunity include reassessing walking zones, bus routes, and bell schedules. We're in the process of expanding our ATS stop-arm, stop-arm camera program by adding additional units and upgrading our equipment on the buses. We're also in the process of reviewing our TSA security assessment, and we'll be reporting back to the board under the Safety and Security Recommendations update. And then we also did a pilot program of, at the end of the school year, with Zonar, doing an electronic pre-trip inspection device, student tracking, and GPS services. So we're reviewing that possibility. And then also looking to restructure field trip billing and office services for some of our private schools in the school system, in the city, as well as day. Our last page deals with, includes benchmark comparisons taken from the Virginia State Report. And that includes transportation.
Do we want to take questions here, or do we want to go through the Food Service presentation and then take questions on both?
I'm thinking take the Food Service presentation, and then we'll ask at the end of.
Well, good evening, everybody. Thank you for allowing me to present to you tonight. And first of all, I want to say thank you for choosing such an excellent company and building a new high school. I cannot wait to see the open kitchen, kitchen stage. Can't wait. So I'm Richard Kane. I believe I met everybody here. I'm the Director of Food Service, and I'm in charge of the Innovative and Nationally Recognized Award-winning Program. And I'm very happy to be here, and food is my life, and I enjoy everything food. So first of all, my department believes that food is education in itself. Every bite that you put in your mouth has an effect on you for the rest of your life. So with that in mind, we try to keep that in mind also for the students. I treat the students the same way that I would treat my own children, which is very good, and they'll tell you that, too. They eat very well. So in a brief synopsis, I mean, we won the Magna Award in 2010. We won in 2015 the 14-carat Gold Safety Award out of 2,500 establishments for having basically the cleanest kitchens around. We've also had award for the Youth Presidential Award for our hydroponics program. And we've been in several publications, premier, Washington Post, and some other stuff, Food Directors Magazine, on top of that. So that was the boring stuff. I know you can't wait to get to the numbers. So, but before we get there, we had to decide in our presentation, what is it that we're measuring? Now, we measure a lot of stuff, a lot of stuff, but we had to narrow it down to what you may be interested in. Now, we can go through it all, but we could just give you a few. We decided that you only want to see a few, because after a long night like tonight dealing with this, you want to go home and eat, too. So in our categories, you know, some of the ones that we use are meal counts, our revenues, our expenditures, some of the basic stuff in a P and L, in the formulas in there. So when you want to read this in your leisure time, you'll understand all the terms and definitions that we have in this report. Next page, please. So going on to the little babies at Jesse Thackeray. Love the little babies, they make me smile every day. So what you see up top, we have our meal counts, and we have what the industry standard is for each one. So meal counts for the industry standard for the average daily participation for breakfast is 35%. For lunch, it would be 75%. Under staff labor meals per labor hour is 14 to 18 meals per hour that is made. And under the expenditure, best practice is 38%. There is no industry standard in the school system. Now, what these industry standards do not take into account is the dynamics of each school district. Our school district has some very unique qualities, which I'll go through with each school. For instance, at Jesse Thackeray, the school is only host 75 students. So we truck in or deliver food there every day to Jesse Thackeray. We do have a kitchen over there, but the kitchen is very small. The reason we truck it in every day is because we build it at Mary Ellen Henderson this year, and then we finish it off at Jesse Thackeray to comply with Health Department rules. That way, the food is always hot or the food is always cold. We don't have enough room over there to store food because it's so small over there, so that's why we truck it in every day. Currently, our results over there for this year is we feed for breakfast 45% and for lunch 74%. Meals per labor hour this year were 43 meals per labor hours, which shoes the results because it's so small. So it makes it look great. So we'll go to the next slide. And we don't have a food cost for Jesse Thackeray because we incorporated in with Mary Ellen Now, over at, oh, can you, forgot the areas of attention, that challenges, opportunities, and future goals. So the challenge for Jesse Thackeray is delivering food there every day. We use one person right now, but if that person is out, what happens is either myself or my assistant or somebody else have to do it, but that, that will cause inconsistency. So that's a challenge. We very rarely have that problem, but I like to highlight, if something happens to the truck or the van during the school year, we have issue. So far, I have 100% record of providing food if I have to put it in my own car. You don't have to worry about that. So the opportunities that I see over there is maybe we can separate the expenses out from MEH. But that makes it kind of hard because it's so small that we buy everything in bulk. And our future goals is probably trying to separate it, just so I can understand it a little bit more. So, thanks a lot. Everybody knows about Mount Daniel. We all are happy and going to be cheering at the end of this year that we're going to be back in our school, brand-new school, spanking new, and the parents will be very happy that we'll be preparing food again for them. So this year, we had Revolution Foods, which was doing the food service for us. Well, they weren't doing it for us, they were delivering the food for us that we prepared for them. So during this time at Mount Daniel, parents are not happy. I haven't been too happy to tell you the truth. I like to tell the truth and be transparent, that the food isn't meet my standards of what we give, and they even admitted that I'm way better than them. But we didn't want to have kids go without food because so many kids eat over there that if we tried to deliver it like Jesse Thackeray, we may end up with a problem. And I didn't want to envision or imagine one day a truck breaking down and the food didn't make it over there. So the way it stands right now, if the food doesn't make it to Mount Daniel, we still have enough notice to do it at another school and then take it over there. So when that's completed, if you see my numbers, the numbers in my slide, we lost about 50% of our revenue and student population who eats at the school because they're dissatisfied. They do things like, they follow the law, and they do it technically right. For instance, you will see on our menus that when they serve pancakes, the law requires us to give them a type of vegetable every day. So you have to have a certain type of orange, you have to have a certain type of greens, you have to have a certain type, serve legumes or beans at certain times, certain amount of times on each week. So when you see, for instance, pancakes on the menu, you will see that they have carrots. Now, I don't know anybody who eats carrots with their pancakes, but technically, they're supposed to have one orange vegetable a week, and so that's the easiest way to fit it in. Now, at the other schools, we go as far as doing sweet potato tater tots. It's orange, it still fits in there, but it takes time to move all that stuff around. So that's the reason why our numbers have went down at Mount Daniel. But we anticipate on getting all those dissatisfied customers back. Little Jill and little Johnny, they're going to come back and eat with us. I'm 100% sure of that. So you will see the revenue results went down to 33,000, it continued to go down. Well, we're in our last days of Revolution Foods, our last days of not eating Richard's So the challenge over at, with all of us, with Nancy and myself in Transportation, is hiring capable food service employees. My employees, we share about half the same staff. Reason is Nancy uses them about two hours in the morning, two hours after school, and then I take up the middle part. But the type of employees that I want who love to cook, don't want to work only for four hours. They don't want to work. Now, surrounding school systems, they work from six hours or more. But we have dealt with the challenge. Now, a lot of people don't want to work in two different departments. They just, one thing we have found out is employees understand forty hours. They do that, they understand. So it makes our job a little difficult, but we manage. Now, the way I've supplemented that over the past is I've used Job Corps candidates as interns. We use interns from the high school. I have one or two. I've gotten interns from Nova, you know, so to supplement that. So I don't want you to think we're dying here. It's challenging and it's hard, but I just want you to understand what we have to deal with on a daily basis. And Nancy has it even harder than I do because she only has two hours in the morning and two hours in the evening. So my opportunities there at Mount Daniel is to regain the parents' trust in serving this, to let them know that I'm back in business once we open that new building. I'm excited about that. So I got two new schools to be excited about. One is long-term, and one is coming very shortly. Now, future goals, we're looking at doing hydroponic towers, roofed-out turns toward that Mount Daniel, so they can learn about where their food comes from. Believe it or not, a lot of kids think chicken comes from the supermarket, and so do all the vegetables. So they can see it grow and eat, just like we do at the high school. At Thomas Jefferson. Thomas Jefferson, our average over there is 35% for lunch and 43%, I'm sorry, yeah, 35% for lunch and 5% breakfast. You will see that the national average, or the industry average, is 35% for breakfast and 75% for lunch. Staff labor meals per labor hour is 15, we doing 15 currently this year, and we're under, oh, no, we fall right in the middle of the industry standard. As far as the best practice, we're over the best practice at 47%. Now, industry standards do not take into account that we live in a very affluent area. Johnny and Jill, most of them eat breakfast at home. A lot of the other school systems, they have a high free and reduced lunch rate, meaning they're 60% and above. So they don't have the opportunity to eat at home, so most of their meals are in the school system. Here, most of our kids eat at home. We have the lowest free and reduced lunch in the school, I mean, state of Virginia. We're at 8%. The next closest to us is at 20-something percent, 30%. But we're the lowest in the state. Challenges I have over at TJ, it's just all equipped. We've been very good at making sure that we use our equipment way past its lifetime. But now, Peter's got to play his pipe, and we had to end up the life with some of our stuff. You know, we have a warmer and a steamer that's gone down, but we'll be able to replace that this year. Corner sales terminals, I brought those about eight years ago, they need to be updated. And I believe in the future, that you saw the future school right there, that lines are not going to be stationary. So what I started doing at, I'm getting ahead of myself now, at the high school is mobile POSs, so that we had an emergency one year over at MEH. I think it was a bomb threat. We had to feed everybody at GM over at MEH, which caused a lot of chaos. So we have that situation again. We have mobile POS systems that I can move on the network wherever I need it to be, so we can still set up the lines where they may be. And that's what I'm moving towards. I think that's the future. It's not set in stone. I think you need to be able to set up things wherever the kids are. My goal is to reduce food costs by 5%, install sensors on all the walk-in refrigerators. Some of them may go down during the summer, they break, and whenever the walk-ins go down, we lose food, which costs us money. Some of them are old, which I get to, they're not old at TJ, but we still have power interruptions, so we have sensors that we're going to put on there, the next slide. At MEH, the statistics are the same. What we had this year was 43% for lunch, 3% for breakfast. Now, the middle school, what I've found out is kids do not like to eat breakfast in middle school. I don't know about your children, but my children were just as hard. We're trying to get them off that. So trying to get them off that bus and eat is either too early in the morning or by the time they don't listen and they're hungry, now they are starving at lunchtime. So our meals per labor hour is slightly below. It's eleven over there, between the fourteen and eighteen. And the food cost is forty-five percent. Our food cost is only slightly higher because, well, we do a lot of things from scratch. We do not buy prepaid or pre-made meals like a lot of schools do. The next slide. Areas of opportunities. Some of the challenges over there, we have to replace the kitchen guardrails that's over there that are missing. I need to update the POS equipment. That's what I was telling you about. We have a tilt skillet that we hope to have completed by this summer, which will allow us to be more dynamic in our... And our future goals? Dr. War was working on some new hydroponic systems that the students are going to create over there at the middle school. And this should be the high school. So at the high school, meal participation is down. We have seven percent this year at breakfast. We have thirty-one percent participation at lunch. The meal per labor hours is eight. And our best practice, we have forty-nine percent. Now, the reason these numbers are so shoot is we had the walk-in go down a few times. We have very old equipment over there and we're trying to make it last when we get to the new school. We're trying to keep it on life support. And that's not easy sometimes because it happens when, of course, Murphy's Law, when you're not around. So it breaks down on Saturday when it's a hundred degrees and the walk-in goes down. But we have a maintenance contract now to help it stay in place until we get there, until we get through that two-year mark. Because it's not fiscal responsible to replace like a thirty-thousand-dollar piece of equipment that's not going to fit in a new school because the dimensions are going to be different. Our challenges over there, and since I got all the power brokers here and we can decide on this tonight and we can vote on it, I hope. We have... We have an open campus at the high school. Open campus.
We're not taking that on tonight.
I was hoping I always say that if we close it off, that makes them have only one place to eat. And you know where I'm feeling at. So, but Dr. Moon said we're not taking that up tonight, but please put it on your future agenda. So we've had some challenges there with the open campus. And with that being said, the food cost, the numbers are lower this year. Overall, my numbers are lower, but they will improve next year because Mount Daniel will be back up and running. Overall... Oh, I'm sorry. I jumped. I wasn't exactly reading page for page. Overall, we are... You can go to the last, next to the last slide. Okay, so overall, we were down. And for the first time, we had expenditures that exceeded revenues. But we have a contingency fund that covers that. So this is the first time that I've had to use that contingency. If you see the numbers at the bottom, it shows that I had expenditures exceed seventy-nine thousand nine hundred twenty-nine. That being said, voting on the open... Let me stop playing because I may be in trouble tomorrow.
Thank you both very much.
I agree. So I'm ready for any questions that anybody has.
Are there any questions for Mr. Kane, you know, Mr. Henderson? Mr. Castillo?
Let's go first.
No, I'll go first.
Well, first of all, thank you both for coming out on this. I guess we're still in July evening. Regarding transportation, one of the things that caught my attention was that bar chart about the number of students at MEH and George Mason who ride the bus versus who was there. And when we get a new high school in a couple of years and it's going to have different transportation profiles, are we going to need more buses all of a sudden?
Possible. Ridership increases then. Need more resources.
Be interesting to model that because that's like, you know, forty-five percent of our students aren't taking the bus now, from what I can tell.
One of the things that we are intending to do next year, just to kind of give you a heads up, and I think it's going to be a big step for us to kind of look at transportation generally is when the second grade moves to Mount Daniel, we're going to have to look at our transportation service all the way across the city. And we have talked about potentially thinking about walking radiuses and the like to see if the numbers that we have are right and if there is some movement in there. And the other part of it, just with respect to the new high school, one of the things I think we really want to try to encourage is more walking and more biking and more ride-sharing and some of those kinds of things. So if there's a way that we can incentivize that somehow, we'd like to look at that as well. But I think the idea of modeling what that might look like into the future is a good one and certainly something we can look at.
I think the other thing that's going to impact transportation and walkability is the grant that was just given in terms of improving the efficiency at Route Seven in Haycock. Right? And making transportation safe is also a key component to walkability. Right? One of the things that we looked at this last year was changing that middle school walk radius. And what we heard from parents is they currently don't feel that it's safe. Right? So we really want to ensure as we look at it, you know, that we're taking into account, you know, what we can do and what that grant will do in terms of improving that safety to help really encourage walking.
Yeah, and I think there's the issue of the size and weight of high school backpacks is another deterrent to walking and biking. And then with respect to the cost comparisons for other jurisdictions, is there any difference in terms of miles traveled per child? Do most... Do Arlington kids travel the same distance in their buses as they do here? Or do we have relatively lower costs because maybe they don't have to drive as far?
Well, Arlington's definitely larger than we are. So I would say that two-point-two square miles. I was pretty impressed with the numbers, seven hundred miles a day. Obviously, some of our outplaced programs contribute to some of those. But we do travel quite a bit. And... But I would say that being a small... So that that contributes quite a bit with the dynamics of the...
And then, Mr. Kane, just a question for you. There's the financial aspect of the food service, but there's also... I mean, there are other ways to look at how good a job you're doing in terms of analyzing operations, right? It's like, do the kids like the food?
Absolutely.
How much food is wasted? You know, because that's another big thing in the city now is how much food we throw away, which turns out to be a lot. So should you look past just money? And, I mean, ideally, take money off the table. How would you rate yourself? I mean, if you were going forward to decide, how well am I doing in my job of serving food to kids? Which is, you know, getting everybody to find something they want to eat in K-12 is no easy job. So take money out of the... Off the table. Well, how would you measure yourself in terms of what kind of job you're doing?
I would say excellent. And I'm going to tell you what...
No, 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 it's not... What are the criteria? Like, how would you... What would you say are the... Because I think you're doing... I think you're doing a great job. But what would the factors be aside from, you know, reducing expenses?
I'll tell you what my factors are when I decide whether I'm doing a good job or not. I talk to the students in all the schools about what they like. Now, of course, at Jesse Thackeray, they like everything, you know? They want certain things. They have an evolved taste. But at the high school and the middle school, what I do is when I go visit the schools and I have my managers, I have them look in the trash cans. Because when you ask a student, they say, oh, nothing. Everything's okay. But the trash can is not what I sell through the line. The trash can tells me the real story. So if you go look in the trash can and you see most of the entrees, that, let's say, lasagna in the trash can, that means they didn't like it, even though they went through the line and buy it. So I don't go just buy what goes through the line. I go buy what goes in the trash can. And the custodians will also let me know that if there's one particular meal that is not doing well that day. The biggest complaints that I get from students, food taste-wise, is it's not enough chocolate chip cookies or the lines are too long, which I have no control over. Or what they've done, we went from, for instance, four serving lines to three serving lines, which makes, I mean, four lunch periods to three lunch periods, which makes the lines longer. And students don't want to wait in line. But I can't do anything about that. You know, I only can get through what comes through. That's my biggest complaint. One of the things I'm going to measure this year is how long does it take that back student, that last student, to get up through the line and try to figure out a way of how to feed them faster? Now, there are other ways that we have for them to get the food faster. I mean, we have grab-and-go. We have a salad bar to try to diffuse it. But with the physical layout of the cafeteria itself, there are only two ways to get in and go through the line. If you've been to other school systems, they have multiple entry points. But that just moves costs from one side to another side. Because if you have multiple entry points, then you also increase your labor because you need a person to stand there and do it. So according to the students, I'm doing a great job because I go out there and I serve them all the time, all the time. What do you want to see? What is it that you like? And all I get is their favorite meals.
Well, the bottom line is that if it takes spending some more money to make students happier, I don't think that's necessarily a bad thing. So if you need more resources, by all means...
Well, that's what I'm talking about. He heard that. Chocolate chip cookies every time for everybody.
Just to be clear, if you need more resources, you don't go to them.
Oh, oh, no. I knew the chain of command. I was a lieutenant.
On that note, no, actually, both of my questions got asked, so I will let it go. So you don't need to ask them again.
That's a good question. Not a real technical question, but it's for transportation. For Mount Daniel, you seem to have some really wonderful bus drivers who are sweet and wonderful to the kids. And, you know, I think it just creates a really great environment. You know, I don't... I'm just curious. Do you train them to be that way? Or you just happen to have found really wonderful people? You know, and I know it's hard to recruit employees to be bus drivers. Like, what do you see in that space? Do you feel like you just happen to have some great people who've done it for years and it's going to be hard? They left, replace them, or...
I would say that the same way that you have teachers at Mount Daniel, you also have very special people. And when you bring in a new employee, you think about where is a good fit for them. And so when you think about Mount Daniel, you think about somebody who's definitely a much... Maybe a motherly, and not necessarily in a female sense because we have male drivers there too. But we also have bus aides on there just because, you know, we'll put seventy of those little Mount Daniel children on those buses and you can't even see the tops of their heads. So if somebody's crying or, you know, Little Johnny dropped something or, you know, we definitely need that extra person to go over there and make sure everybody's doing okay and not ripping each other's hair out. So, I mean, we've been very fortunate is a lot of it. But we also do a lot of training in student management and how to, you know... And that student management's very different from Mount Daniel age all the way up to high school age. And so sometimes it can be kind of challenging. Usually, middle school is our greatest challenge, as you could imagine. I'm sure it is in your world too. And so... But for the most part, we work really hard with our drivers to make them feel supported, but also, you know, hopefully make them part of the community and part of the team is the educational aspect because they really do feel like, you know, they'll tell you, those are my kids. The kids on their bus are their kids.
Any other questions? Thank you both for all that you do in getting our guests to school and making sure they eat a great nutritious meal. It's... A couple of times I've eaten at high school. It's a rarity from my job. I sometimes go to high school at lunchtime and they kind of offer the meals. And I can... Of course, I'm going there, then I'm like, yeah, okay. Thank you, but no thank you. So I see the difference in having a food service staff that really takes into consideration what students want to eat and making sure that a lot of it doesn't go to waste. So I appreciate the time that you and your staff put into that and Nancy making sure that you and your staff and getting kids back and forth to the buildings. With looking at the radiuses, what do you see as some of the challenges potential of just recruiting staff for your, for bus drivers? Are we competitive within that world?
The recent salary increases to the scales being the five percent and the recent three percent have definitely... So bus drivers are competitive. We're still having problems with benefits and stuff like that. So but as long as we can bring salaries up, not everybody needs benefits. And there's a big benefit to work for Fall Street City, which is two-point-two square miles instead of the monster state of Texas and being just a number somewhere off in the West End, or, you know? So right now, it looks like we're fully staffed. And so I'm going to knock on wood and hope for, pray for the best. We do need a bus aide. But other than that, the bus drivers are the ones that are really difficult to get hired and onboard and trained and everything. So hopefully, be in good shape come fall.
Well, thank you both very much for giving us a little time.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And I would like to say thank you to the school board for their continued support of our program. You've always been supporter of the food program. And I'm very appreciative of that. You know, because I know most of you, if not all of you, are parents also. And I'm a parent, so I understand. So I believe. And I appreciate your belief in me. I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. And they all eat.
They all eat.
The last item is the monthly budget status report. Ms. Michael?
Thank you so much for the opportunity to talk to you this evening about our budget and actual expenditures. First, I'd like to start my presentation just by really thanking all of the great work that staff have done. Michelle Kopick, our budget director. Margaret Double Day has really been working in terms of getting our year-end processing done, as have all of the finance staff in our school. So I really want to thank them as they continue to work towards finalizing year-end. So for June tonight, we don't have an update on the operating fund because we're still finishing all of those final transactions. So we'll be back in September to present to you the final accounting for FY18 for all of our different funds. But what I wanted to give you an update on tonight is Mount Daniel expenditures. As I indicated last month, we had some expenditures at Mount Daniel that weren't cost overruns. They're things that weren't included in the original proposal that we need to fund for that project. And I had talked last month that we would fund those using primarily funding from year-end, but that we would present to the board and accounting of all those items. So you were aware of what they are. I just briefly tonight wanted to tell you what those are. As part of that final accounting in September, we will present to you a budget transfer where you'll actually approve us transferring the money into the project to pay for these costs. So again, these aren't cost overruns. These are all things that were not included in the original project cost. So as I indicated previously, we didn't include, for example, funding for FFNE, furnitures, fixtures, and equipment. So when we look at these categories of expenditures, they're grouped by the reason type. So the first reason type is existing building upgrades. When you look at that category, the first thing that we have are brick pavers. There's going to be a recognition walk. And ultimately, that cost will be paid for by the PTA. But initially upfront, we need to pay for that, pavers to get ordered, but we will get reimbursed. Next, we have the playground is getting a retaining wall put in. That's truly going to help with that playground. And there's going to be an exterior drinking fountain. One of the things is for students to come all the way into the building if they need a drink when they're out at recess. a drink when they're out at recess, this will give them the ability to get a drink while they're outside. And then the last two items are related to the current buildings. We're updating finishes in the 2005 edition, so we look at things like carpet and paint. And then when you look at the kindergarten classrooms, their toilet rooms, which were inside the classrooms, are not handicapped accessible or ADA accessible, so the doorways were too narrow. So as part of that update to the classrooms, we'll make those restrooms accessible for all students that could potentially go to school there. The next item that we have that you guys are well aware of as required by code is the water storage tank. And when we look at water, that's for fire flow to ensure that we have enough water pressure in terms of the sprinkler system. So that is the item for the water tank. And then the last items are all of those unbudgeted project costs. There's a little bit of paving that we're doing in terms of the bus loop. Inside, we're changing the student drinking fountains, so the refill water bottles, that's that cost. We have some HDMI cable conduits that will help with projectors in the classroom. And then we have, all of the existing keys on the doors are going to be rekeyed to match the keys to the new, right? Something that clearly should have been included initially that wasn't. And then we also have all of that FFNE, so the library and office furniture, that's that next item for fifty-five thousand dollars. And then lastly is the security system. So again, the entire building will be updated with key card readers, including the elevator, so we can be sure that building is safe and secure. So these are an update on all of the Mount Daniel costs and we'll bring that final budget transfer to you in September. So thank you for the opportunity to go through this tonight.
Any questions? You? Thanks, Ms. Michael, but you said these aren't cost overruns, but that they are additional expenditures, right? So in other words?
They are items that were unbudgeted in the original proposal, right? So when they originally came up with the cost for this project, they didn't include, for example, rekeying or putting security door readers on all the doors, things that we think are certainly essential, but it's not something in terms of cost overrun that we, the cost of went up or escalated. These are things that truly weren't included in the original scope that we think are essential now.
No, I get that, but in other words, where is this money coming from?
So in the column to the right of this chart, we've indicated where that funding will come from. The brick pavers will be paid for by the PTA.
I'm sorry, I'm, I, is it coming, is it oper, is this CIP, is this operational? How does it?
It's an end of year operational balance.
So all of the year-end funding on this chart is funding that's going to be available from our FY18 budget. So they're operational dollars that we will then request that we transfer to this project in the CIP or in the construction fund, the capital fund. So we'll be using operating dollars that are available from this year to year end to pay for these items.
It's half a million dollars, so.
You're correct.
Do we have enough gas in the tank?
Yes, we do, based on the projections that I gave last month in terms of what our ending balance will be, we do believe that we'll be able to pay for all of these items with that funding.
And that frankly was part of our, part of our process as we were looking at the budget last year is how much savings could we have if we made internal cuts to do the things we wanted to do within the budget and also have enough to take care of some things if we needed to here. There are a number of things, just for the good of the order, that were, that we needed at, at Mount Daniel that we didn't, that we just can't pay for. For example, lighting, LED lighting is not part of the proposal, wasn't, and so everything will have fluorescent. We could have updated the LED lights, but we didn't. So there are a few things that we put through sort of our internal filter, if you will, to decide up or down, what can we do, what can't we do? And all of, all of the things in sum total were closer to a million dollars, we were able to do half.
Thanks for, thanks for finding that money.
Well, it's year end and one time only.
But is that, is that going to hit our fund balance then ultimately?
Yeah.
So what it will mean is the funding that we're spending on this is funding that won't be added to fund balance.
Notice the fund balance will.
It will be lower than it would have been had we not made these expenditures.
Any other questions? So within this list of items that are going to come through, I guess, what, what would you say are items that should have potentially been, been looked at and added in at the time? I can see the, the one that's right at the gate that jumps out at me that, and that would be the FFNE furniture portion of it. I get the, I guess rekeying probably should have been too. Balance maybe have a, I think a good addition to do that. I actually prefer those, the newer films that give that option, so, but what are some that?
You know, I, I think it's, I think it's hard to say exactly which ones we think should have been done. I think to pivot from that, one of the things we learned sort of in the process of this was not, was what not to do in the next.
In the future.
Project. So things like security systems, rekeying, HDMI cables and the like are in the GM package just because we wanted to make sure that they were there. I mean, we could, we could go through a list if you wanted and give you a written explanation of what potentially should have been in there, I just don't, I don't know what value, except for the value that gave us support not to do the next time.
Jumped out at that too. With the security system, is it individual classrooms with the card readers or are we looking at, are we talking the exterior accessing the building?
The card readers will be on the exterior doors as well as the elevator.
Okay. Any other questions?
Well, your, your question, Mr. Chair, raises, I mean, the big one, half of this expenditure is the ADA kindergarten toilet room. So what's, what's, is this throughout, is this for every single kindergarten toilet or how did that, how did that come to pass? Because that, that seems to me like the big one.
I assume it's in the new, in the existing building that you're, that you're doing this.
It is, it is in the existing building. When you look at those rooms, right, as part of this whole project, we're putting new sprinklers in place, so they're already in that space doing work, right? And this is something, right, code isn't going to mandate that we do it now, right? But they're not accessible and because we already are under construction, right, the timing is really perfect in terms of doing it without any disruption, right? So what I would say is, is this is something that, that's really critical in terms of student access and the timing to fit it in is really at the best point.
So we're basically deciding, hey, this, this is expensive, but it's worth doing.
Typically in projects like this, if you touch one area, the idea is bring it up to code if you touch, because it's the most efficient, most effective, cost-effective time to do it. So yes, the answer to your question is you're right. We made, we made that decision to spend that money to bring those up to code because we knew it would be at least double the price if we had to do it later.
And will this be done prior to school starting or will it be?
Yep. When we open the new building, or the old building, it'll be done.
Any other questions for?
Mr. Chair, can I just ask a question, not about this, but about the rest of our summer? We have testing and student performance results, we have other planning for the coming year. We have the issue of your contract. My understanding is we're not meeting again until September and I'm asking, is that feasible?
I have a turn with you. We have a August date on that weekend, a leadership kind of.
That was for a closed session of the board.
Yes, yes. But if it, when we have a next leadership meeting, I'll take the, that date is the...
If I can look. We, we currently have the fourteenth on hold. We, we are looking more and more like we might need that date. So one of the things we could do is dovetail it and do some of the other pieces.
I was just going to say, if, then we have that date on hold, if we, in the next meeting and we discussing some of the things that you just mentioned and see the necessity that we need to have a meeting in, in August, if, you know, what it sounds like, there's a possibility of the, the closed session may need to happen, like, having a meeting anyway, so this kind of dovetail it into everything. But we will, look a bit more full of our, an update here.
Okay, thank you. Give it up time. Any other questions? If there's nothing else, we are adjourned for the, thank you all very much.